Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation now convenes this public hearing. The public hearing notices were given to the media. First notice on Wednesday, March 2nd, second notice on Friday, March 10th, and for the record, today is Wednesday, March 15th, and the time now is nine o'clock. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Senator San Augustine, and to my right, your left would be Senator Will Castro, who is the Vice Chair on Education, and to my left, your right would be Senator Frank Uggun, who is a member of the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation. The committee will hear and accept testimonies, both oral and written, on the following. Today, we had scheduled six nominees. The first will be the appointment of Amanda F. Blas, position for General Public Member, Guam Academy Charter School Council. The term length is three years. The other appointees are Rosa S. Palomo, also for the charter school, but she has been withdrawn from her nomination. We had scheduled Vincent T. Younggroo to the Guam Education Board. He also was withdrawn. We had the appointment of Pileguio S. Sardoma from the Guam Board of Equalization. He'll be postponed because he is off island. We have the appointment of Krishnan, I want to make sure I pronounce your last name correct, Shirangan, okay, and you'll be after Ms. Blas. And then we have another appointee of Robert A. Cososmo for the position of Guam Education Board. He's being postponed until April because he's still on active duty. Okay, the general rules for public hearing. The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of the sign-in. So we will start with Ms. Amanda Blas and anybody else that's going to testify on her behalf, for or against. The written testimony may be read. Lengthy written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony should be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the nominee. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, or may be desired by members of the panel. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name for the record, and then after the testimony, the committee will receive, okay, for the next 10 days after this hearing today, up to 10 days, will be receiving any written testimony. All right, we'll now begin with Ms. Amanda Blas. If you could please, ma'am, have a seat on the front, and I'd like to also recognize our Vice Speaker, Senator Therese Terlay, on my left. So Ms. Amanda, please just make sure the mic is on, okay?
Hafaday, senators of the 34th Legislature, it is a pleasure to be in front of you today. My name is Amanda Fransel Blas, and I'm here before you asking that you confirm me to be part of the Guam Academy Charter School Council. I was raised by five people primarily in my life, and I am honored to have two of them here today. My mother, Christine Blas, and her brother Eugene Blas are both here with me, supporting me today. And those five individuals, including my mother's other sister Katrina Blas and my grandparents, have always made education a main priority for me. I went to San Vicente Catholic School, all through elementary and middle school, moved on to Notre Dame High School, where I graduated, and then went to University of Portland in Oregon. Currently, I am working on my master's degree at the University of Guam. Education, as I mentioned earlier, has been a very big priority in my life, always growing up, which explains why, when I was in Portland, Oregon, I did work a lot in part-time capacity as a tutor or an after-school aide to definitely help with the education situation in Portland. Today, I still do volunteering when it's education-related as well.
Does anybody have, any of the senators on the panel have any question for Ms. Blas?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Blas, I just want to thank you very much for extending yourself and consenting to the governor's appointment to serve in this particular capacity. I'm pleased that you started off by emphasizing your focus and the family's focus on education because really you're going into an arena where the educational institution would continue to mold the minds of our younger generation, so eventually they'll be able to serve and live very productive lives in the future. So I thank you for extending yourself in this particular capacity, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. We would have Senator Will Castro.
Hafaday, good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations on the appointment, and thank you for accepting. Over the year and a half, I've heard your vision. You had some very specific ideas about the role of charter schools in the community, and so I just want to thank you for sharing that with most of us, and I hope that you'll be able to manifest that in your new role. Mr. Chairman, it's without a doubt that her education experiences and vision, but to me, most importantly, your stick-with-it-ness that I think would greatly advance the education agenda. I have a rhetorical question for you. You don't have to answer this morning, Amanda, but I'd like to have a dialogue with you as the Vice Chair on Education on what role you think charter schools play in the community. I mean, just to be clear, I support charter schools. I just want you to help the committee flush out what that agenda might look like in the future and how we can work with you. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you again, Senator.
Madam Vice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hafaday, Ms. Blas, thank you for being here, and thank you for accepting the nomination for this appointment. I'm wondering if you could share with us your vision for the charter schools, as Senator Castro was hinting to?
Sure. When I did run for the legislature, I did talk about my vision for a hospitality charter school on Guam, and I think it's rather obvious why this is necessary. Tourism is our largest industry. Last year, we broke records, I believe, with over 50 million, I want to say, I think closer to 60 million visitors on Guam, and that's growing. We have a tourism 2020 vision, and I firmly believe that will exceed that. And I believe it's important that we prepare our next and our future generations to hold these, not just the jaws, but the careers in the tourism industry. And so that's my vision for a hospitality charter school, is that we provide a charter school that equips them with the skills needed to thrive in the hospitality and tourism industry. That means language skills, culinary skills, even finance skills, to better understand how the financial situation of the hotel. But I do want you to know also that I'm not just here because I support the idea of the hospitality charter school. I'm sure, as all of you know who have children, that one size doesn't fit all for children in schools. A private school might not be best for one individual or a public school. And I think the option of a charter school ensures that our future generations have the most pathways to success, and that's what I'm most concerned about, the success of our future generations, of our future students, and that is why I'm so adamant about charter schools.
Thank you. So the charter schools are, they really do offer for Guam unique opportunities, like you said, to take care of all the different children and the different aspirations that they have, but they also pose a challenge for DOE and a challenge for the council to monitor these schools, to make sure that our students will receive, you know, what they've signed up for. And I think you have to be very diligent, and I just want to get on the record, you will be available for the diligence that is involved in this type of monitoring?
I will be. I'm very committed to this.
Thank you very much, and thank you, and I know you, I'm confident that you will do a good job, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve in this voluntary capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Blas. I'd like to also congratulate you for, or thank you for accepting the nomination, and I actually look forward to your confirmation. You know, I'm a very positive guy. Everybody that accepts a nomination, we hope to bring you forward so we can put you to work. But I also actually would be soliciting your support in when I get all the other education boards together, so that all the boards can sit down and focus on the students, not their own council or their own boards, but on the overall of the people, because I know that that was one of the issues you brought up in the past. Okay, thank you, ma'am, and now I'll call on the other testimonies, and we'd have Gloria Barreto, okay, and would ask Johnny Soblon. We'd ask, let me see what else. We got one more, and there's RC. Christine, please just come on up, and then we'll, in the order that I call, will speak, okay? No, come on, have a seat. Yeah, you each have your own mic, so you'll be good. Just make sure when it's your turn to speak, please just turn on. Just state your name, ma'am, and commence firing.
Good morning and hafaday, Senator San Augustine, Mr. Chairman, sir, Senator Castro, Senator Uggun, and Senator Terlay. My name is Gloria Barreto, and I am a retired administrator for the Guam Public School System. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to testify during this confirmation hearing on behalf of Amanda Fransel Blas and her selection to represent the general public for the Guam Academy Charter School Council. I have known Amanda for most of her life. Growing up, Amanda has always made school a priority. She was very studious and got involved in many school activities. Getting a good education was always very important to Amanda. She attended San Vicente Catholic School for her elementary and middle school years and is a graduate of Notre Dame High School. Amanda then attended college in Portland, Oregon, where she received her bachelor's degree in communication from the University of Portland. She is a very determined woman and does what it takes to reach goals, every goal she sets for herself. She is always successful at achieving her goals. Amanda is also a very hard-working individual. She is driven by her passion to assist people, most especially children, in need as best she can. Amanda is currently the Treasurer for the Guam Foster Families Association. She assisted students in the Guam Education Council's Wave Club and will be assisting the Girl Scouts in their upcoming fundraisers. Amanda has also been a volunteer for the Santa Teresita Church in Mangilau, where she consistently served as the advisor for cultural arts and provided tutorial services to children needing assistance with their homework. She was a CCD teacher and participated in coordinating activities and events for students in her parish. While in Portland for college, Amanda also volunteered at several public schools and coordinated after-school programs such as cultural dance. Amanda is currently also enlisted in the Guam Army Reserve Unit on Guam and is working for the governor's office. In closing, based on Amanda's work experiences and qualification, I am certain that when confirmed, Amanda Fransel Blas would do everything within her expertise and ability to complete the duties and responsibilities expected of her as a representative for the general public in the Guam Academy Charter School Council. Thank you again for this opportunity, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Gloria. We would have now Johnny.
Sis Massey, Mr. Chairman, Senator San Augustine, Senator Castro, Senator Uggun, and Vice Speaker Therese Terlay, and Senator Mary Torres. I'm here to support the nomination and appointment of Amanda Fransel Blas. This person, very young but old in spirit, young and old in spirit, and very assertive, aggressive in the needs of the future generations of our young people here in Guam. I support, totally support her appointmentship, and I hope you do too, sir. Thank you, Sis Massey.
Uggun, Johnny. We'll have now Christine, right? Okay, Christine.
Thank you. Good morning, senators and everyone here. My name is Christine RC, and with such honor, I'm speaking on behalf of Amanda Fransel Blas. In the time I've known Ms. Blas, I've had the opportunity to work very closely with her, observe her strong and admirable work ethic, and watch her grow professionally in a short amount of time. I wholeheartedly believe Ms. Blas will serve as an outstanding board member as she has exemplified many qualities of an exceptional leader. Ms. Blas consistently puts others before herself, and that's what I admire most. If she isn't doing her daily job as Deputy Press Secretary to the Governor, serving in the U.S. Army Reserve, or running a youth ministry at the Santa Teresita Church, she's making sure all her loved ones are rising up with her. Ms. Blas has exuded confidence in all that she does while remaining humble, a highly-regarded benchmark of true leadership. Lastly, I hope to leave you with the most important statement that I can share about Ms. Blas. She is the epitome of commitment. By stepping up, especially in matters that are far beyond her, and defending things she knows are right and just, are exactly the reasons I believe she will make a great board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Does any of the panel members like to offer any questions? And I'd like to also recognize Senator Torres is also present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, you know, Amanda came up here and expressed her desire to serve the community in this particular capacity, but she did not necessarily highlight all of her background and experience and her contributions to the community. So this is wonderful whenever we have members of the community, friends, family, that come up and actually testify in support of a nominee, because I just found out that she's very active in the Santa Teresita Church. I also found out now, because the packet that we traditionally receive is inclusive of all the background and the information that appointees fill out, but based on the presentation here, I did not have a few of the additional pages that are traditionally provided. But I just found out that she's a member of the Army Reserve. So just looking at the total person that Ms. Blas is presenting, that the governor has signed off and concurred, and not only that, she brings her youth in this particular capacity, it even highlights the reason why we need to be able to continue to support individuals such as Ms. Blas. When she pursues public service in this capacity, albeit as a member of the board, member of the council, I anticipate she's going to provide some wonderful contributions from that perspective. So Ms. Blas, you know, I had no idea you were a fellow comrade in the military, and I had no idea that you place God at the foremost of your life. And to me, when it comes to God, family, and country slash community, that certainly speaks volumes of an individual's character. So I thank you again. I just wanted to emphasize those aspects of your background, because those are very, very important in terms of looking at an individual who's willing to serve, and eventually we know what your eventual aspirations may be. So thank you very much, and you have my support. Thank you.
Does any of the other panel members like to make any comments or questions? No? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mrs. Blas. I actually look forward to seeing you on the council, and we're going to have fun with the council. I'm totally in support of the charter schools also, so we're going to have fun. Thank you. We will now proceed to the next nominee, which is Mr. Krishnan Shirangan. Okay, if you could come forth.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Senator Uggun, Senator Terlay, and Senator Torres. My name is Krishnan Shirangan. I've been here on Guam since 1979. I have submitted my resume, and I hope that you, all of you, have a copy of it. But I would like to say a few things, highlights of my work here on Guam. The first job that I did on Guam was the reorganize, reestablish Simpliford, which is a very flourishing business today. That was in the early 80s. Then, after that, I started Nutz and Grains. It's also still in business. Then, after a few years later, I decided business is not part of my life, so I decided to become a teacher. I taught at Southern High for about eight years, and then I was transferred to JFK. So since 2007, I've been a librarian for JFK High School. During that time, it was transitioned from old campus to the new campus, so we had to reorganize our library, and if any of you have been to that library, you can see the amount of work that we have put over there. And I'm also very supportive of the new system that we have launched district level. It's called Atrium. So it's, it's, it's has been installed in all the schools, and we are, our librarians are going through training. I've been a big help, going to different, different schools, helping other librarians, getting that software, you know, installed, and it's fully functional at the moment. As far as Guam Public Library Board is concerned, I've been a chairperson for about three years, and then this is my second term, but I'm very thankful that the governor has appointed me, and I look forward to working with the wonderful staff at Guam Public Library.
Thank you, Mr. Shirangan, right?
Shirangan.
Okay, I want to make sure I pronounce it correctly.
Yes.
I want to murder your last name or your first name.
No, you're doing a very good job.
Okay, so far, so good, right? Okay.
Yes.
Well, you know what, sir? I'd like to first, number one, thank you for accepting the nomination.
Thank you.
Because this is your second round.
Yes.
On the board, and you were the chairperson.
Yes.
Now, do we have problems today in the library that we need to address? Maybe you might want to bring up some of the issues that you may be facing in all the school libraries?
Well, we are very fortunate. We are thankful for the past Guam Legislature for taking the Passport Fund and distribute to all the schools. So that is one of the best things that ever happened to our school libraries. So our librarians are given money for every year, and those funds are strictly for the students. So students are, the librarian, take the fund and they prepare a budget according to their needs, and they spend throughout the school year. So that is one of the best things. I'm very grateful for that. As far as technology at the school level is concerned, we are very thankful that our, one of our staff is here, Neil Rochelle, and through his efforts, we were able to get some federal grants, and we, because of the grant, we are able to purchase that software. And now we are, the system is fully functional. Before that, we had a system, but it was not partially functional, so we had to get rid of that old system, so we have a brand-new system. And also, I want to say a few things. We were very fortunate to hire nine brand-new librarians as a result of a cohort that was through the University of Guam, so we have some young people, young librarians shining in our school libraries.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'm just happy that you didn't ask for more money from Passport, so, but thank you. Does any of the panel members, any of my colleagues have any questions? Senator Torres?
Mrs. Shirangan, it's very nice to hear your words this morning, and I'm very encouraged with your vast knowledge and expertise with dealing with library systems. I'm especially interested in knowing how you might be able to help advance the culture of reading. Many of us from the old school, before technology was so prevalent in terms of gaming and entertainment, books were our world and our window to the world, and it is also one of the most affordable things that you can provide a child, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
In terms of expanding their knowledge, but also giving them the entertainment value, true entertainment value. So do you have any thoughts on how, in this day of technology, we could actually encourage more participation in reading, in the grassroots arena of our community? Do you have any thoughts on how we can do that?
Well, you know, the new system, we have eBooks. The eBooks, students can log into the system anywhere, as long as they have internet, and at JFK, we have purchased about almost 500 books last year, $5,000 worth of books. So if you go to gdoelibraries.net, and then you will see the list of the entire libraries of our district, and then if you click JFK and the OPEC, and then you go to eBooks, and it will list all the eBooks. But, you know, you don't have to go by eBooks, but also if you type any subject, and you will find books, eBooks. And at JFK, we have also, we have a bigger, you know, ESL program, we have a strong ESL programs. We collaborate with those teachers, and by getting books, not only high school level, but we also get like second grade, third grade, fourth grade levels, books. So we have spent quite a bit of money on that, and the teachers are bringing the kids, and they recommend those books for them to start reading, you know.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. And then the other thing I want to also comment, those folks who started the guampedia.com, excellent work. They have done an outstanding job. That is a very good thing for our students. You know, the resource related to local level, it's not there. So what they have done, they have collected information from, you know, historical information, all kind of things. So that is a very, very good thing for our school, especially for JFK.
Does any other senator like?
Hafaday, Mr. Shirangan.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you, what, are the GDOE libraries part of the public library system?
No, it is a totally separate system, but eventually, one of the things that we would like to do is linked with public, our public library system.
How do you envision that they would benefit from each other or being linked together?
So that, you know, the present system, for an example, if a student is looking for a book at, from GW, and if he cannot find the book, but he can go to JFK and browse and find it, if the book, the book that he or she is looking for, if we have that book, we should be able to help that student. That's, you know, integrated with all the other libraries. And as far as public library, that's one of the plans that eventually we would like to link with public library system, so that students should be able to go there and find resources.
What is your, what do you think the challenges are for the public library and for the village libraries that pretty much, I mean, do you have any plans? Does the board have any plans to revitalize those village libraries or extend resources?
I want to go on record saying that the governor and the pest lady have been a big support of our public library, and the pest lady comes almost every Saturday and reads for the small kids. I would say that the biggest challenge is the funding. The funding is the biggest challenge, and if you folks consider increasing a little more funding, we could do a lot of things at the public library.
Well, are there any current plans? I mean, what is the challenge? I know that they've put in some technology, and the public, is a technology, the main public library, is that up to par?
Yes, we could use an IT person at the library right now. At the moment, we don't have an IT person, and also we could use a couple of certified, qualified librarians. And also, we could use a couple of certified qualified librarians. You know, we do not have librarians for about 10 years. And because of our dedicated staff, you know, we are fully functional, and they are doing an outstanding job. That is our biggest challenge.
And what is the status of the village libraries? I know that some are different, some have converted themselves into resource centers.
No, they went back, they went back to the library. They are doing that, but we have limited hours for our branch libraries because of the funding. So, some libraries we open only twice a week. Some libraries we open like three times a week. But we don't have enough staff to open for seven days a week. That is our biggest challenge, the funding.
Do the mayors have access to the libraries? Is this a board policy that you've adopted regarding the hours of the village libraries? And do the mayors have access to those libraries according to your policy?
I'm not sure how the mayors are involved, but it's 100% managed by our library, our staff from here, from the main library. But mayors are welcome to the libraries, but however, I am not sure of the contribution that they make there.
All right, so is there any immediate plan that we can look forward to for the public library?
Yes. Well, we would love to get that Internet Cafe going. That's in our plans, and we have everything. But unfortunately, we didn't have quorum for about, almost six, seven months. We didn't have, one of our members resigned, board members, so we couldn't have any quorum. So, so once I'm back in Board, then we should be able to get that going, the Internet Cafe.
Can you tell us how that Internet Cafe will benefit the public library system?
Well, you know, if you go to any of the coffee shops, most of our folks, you know, go there just to do the browsing, using the computers. So, as a public library, this would be an opportunity, you know, to, as a service to the public. So, they can come there and have a couple of coffee and use their computers. You know, it's our, you know, we got a great locations, you know, location here in Argania. And we thought that would be a real beneficial for our public.
Right, okay. Well, thank you very much Mr. Sirangan, and thank you for your service. I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you Madam Vice. Senator Ogun.
Thank you very much Mr. Chairman, and Krishnan, thank you for, again, for accepting the Governor's nomination to serve again on the Public Library Board. Just a couple of questions. You know, when we think about going into the budget process, one of the areas that we always look at, or we try to envision is, where or how have the people's funds been expended in the past year? And how is it going to be expended in the coming year? And I bring that up because my question is, based on the libraries and the system that we have in place, I know you mentioned about applying eBooks in our schools. I think that's excellent because you're moving also with the times with technology. I know you also mentioned the option of an Internet Cafe. Certainly, I hope that you're looking at bidding that out so that in fact, it would be a private entity that would come in and provide that direct service so that it's not a cost assumed by the government of Guam. Because there are a lot of wonderful Internet Cafes or Cafes out there that could provide that service. But my question is, looking at the traditional library system that we have, what's the level of your foot traffic or your patrons coming in on a daily basis or during the course of the weekend?
Well, at the moment, I hope any of you have been to the library recently. It's a busy place. If you go in the afternoon, and I have seen people from all walks of life and doing work and reading. And we could improve, we could improve our services, maybe extending weekend hours. And as I said earlier, the funding is our major challenge. And if you consider giving us a little more money, we can provide, you know, better services.
No, I understand Krishnan. I understand about the funding component because that has been a challenge over the last decade, decade and a half. But just looking at the foot traffic, I'm glad you mentioned that. Do you have, or does the library actually collect or generate actual numbers in terms of the number of patrons that come in?
Yes, we do have those.
On a daily basis?
Yes.
And then what the peak times are? Let's say for example, some of the other branches, the village libraries branches, you mentioned that the, most of them are open perhaps at three days out of the week. Now, is three days out of the week the requirement or the demand of the community? Or would it be best to go with half a day, all five days, six days out of the week so that it would provide that greater access to the community where that library system is presently situated at? So, I mean, ultimately, those are policy decisions and administrative decisions that should be made by either the Board or the Director of the Public Library. But it always comes down to the service that is being provided to the community. So, it comes, like I just said again, if you're looking at right now, three days out of the week, perhaps the Board may want to revisit that. And take a look and monitor the demand and the use of the library, whether it's in the morning, or the afternoon, or the early evenings, and then accommodate our community. Because that's, you're providing a tremendous service. And that's education. And it goes back to one of my colleagues, when she emphasized the reading component, trying to find a way to encourage more of our people to participate in that. So, if by any chance, if I can ask you to please provide the Chairman with at least the most current statistics that you have on foot traffic?
Yes.
For all of the individual libraries? Because that would be excellent information to have.
Yes.
When we go into the budgetary discussions.
Yes.
Okay, but thank you very much again for extending yourself for service to our community and to our people. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Senator Will Castro?
Yeah, good morning. I just wanted to say that I appreciate your well-rounded background in the library sciences, operations, and management. I too have a similar background, but I have one question and one request. And my question is sort of related to what the other Senators here have intimated. In a nutshell, in the era of technology, what role do you see libraries playing in our education sector to include private schools, and more importantly, in the community? And I'm not talking specifically about the boundaries of management and governance between DOE and the library system per se, but more of what you envision the roles of libraries being in the education and the broader community sense, if you can.
Okay, at this, we, there's, I'm pretty sure you, all of you heard of this, one of the largest library, digital library called EBSCO. Okay, the EBSCO is funded by an organization called Pearl from Hawaii. And people, students from Guam and rest of the Micronicia can log in with free of charge. And that is one of the benefits, you know. You know, anyone who have, you know, Internet, they should be able to get that. That's one of the services that we are very privileged to have. I think as, you know, last four, five years, we have done remarkable progress in a school system. However, I would like to say, we could like to do that same thing in the public library, the hours, you know. Our, our branch libraries, like Senator Ogun mentioned, we would like to provide longer hours, you know, better services. You know, we want, we're finding, we're looking for ways to improve our services. But the thing is that funding is our challenge. But we would love to open that, that's very important. Like Senator Terlay mentioned, that, you know, the reading, that has to be started at the grassroots level. And that is the branch libraries, where, that's where we are going to start. So, to do that, we need to have, make sure that we open the library, longer hours, more books, and things like that. So, we have been, we, our budget this last five, six years is the same amount. No changes at all. So, we have to work with that, that money. So, that would be ideal if we get, if we keep our branch libraries open, maybe seven days a week. That would be, that's where we are going to start, improve the reading, which we don't have right now. We don't have that, that kind of money to start, you know, open the library for long hours.
So, with that said, and here's my request. The Chairman and myself, I'm assuming other members of the committee as well, would like to invite you. The goal is to explore the closer possibility of a closer integration between the library system and the municipalities. Specifically on our agenda would be the possibility of a regional technology center that would make technology training, and in one specific instance, maybe even tech literacy and equipment available to students and their parents beyond the regular school days. So, maybe sometime in early April.
Okay, yes, I would be happy to.
Thank you sir. Just a little secret out. I'm working with DOE already on the Wi-Fi. Instead of buying textbook, go strictly to technology. And then if that is successful, then it will bleed to the library where probably all the libraries on the island will be Internet Cafes for all over the island. And because the Wi-Fi setup is actually, it's going to start out of UOG, and the UOG is going to be the main hub right now. And it's an education system that's set up where it doesn't compete with DOCOMO or any of the private industries right now. But it'll phase into them where they'll make money, but that's something you should be looking out for.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
So, I'll make sure we invite you to that.
Okay.
So you can participate in that discussion.
Thank you sir.
Johnny Sablon, the testimony, thank you mister. Sirangan. Johnny Sablon, the only oral testimony.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Senator Castro and Senator Ogun, Vice Speaker Therese, and Senator Mary Torres. I come here as the President of Chomor Affairs, that oversees the library. And I served actually as also a Director for the Library in the Reorganizational Chart. And I'm here to support the nomination of Mr. Krish Sirangan, who's actually been very devoted librarian and teacher for many years. As I've known him, he was my neighbor, across the street neighbor at Latty Heights for a good number of years, five years. And I've known his children, Jason and Satini, and his wife Barbara. And he's a good man. And we are very lucky here in Guam to have someone who would like to contribute and help the Guam Public Library System. In this capacity, I seek for your approval on his nomination.
Thank you sir. Does the panel have any questions they want to pose on Mr. Sablon, who's in charge of Biba Somoro?
Biba, Biba Miss Somoro. Sidus Mossi.
Thank you Sidus Mossi. Is there anyone else that has not testified or wishes to testify that's in the room? None? Then this, there being none, the committee will conclude the confirmation hearing of Ms. Amanda Blass and Mr. Krishnan Sirangan. Committee will continue to receive testimonies for the next few days, which equates to 10 days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on Education, Finance, Taxation, or hand submitted via email. Sidus Mossi, for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. For those at home, thank you for watching. Thank you. That ended our hearing. Thank you.